Could I have a motion to reconvene as a council and seal the executive session minutes?
So moved.
Second? Okay, motion been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
The camera's on. Good. I need to report to everyone tonight that we had an executive session and a vote was taken. I'd like to let the public know that the council voted to give the manager the higher of the two salaries he's currently doing or has been for some time since actually July 1. He's been the town manager, but he's also been acting police chief. He's going to do that from and has been from July 1. It's going to go to first week through the first week of January, which would be up to January 9 until the new police chief comes in. So the council voted to give him the higher of the two salaries, which happens to be the chief's salary. The difference in money is $7,180.85, which he will be receiving over a few months. It'll get spread out. The finance director has ID'd how to pay for it. The vote that was taken was four in favor and one opposed. Those in favor was Counselor Hurst, Counselor Buck, Counselor Thompson, and Counselor Lindofsky voted to approve, and Counselor Barbara Capel voted not. And we recognize that, we all recognize, the chief has been doing both jobs exceptionally well, and we just thought, the four of us thought that it was a fair thing to do. And that doesn't mean that Barbara didn't think it was fair. She had her own reasons for voting no, which was fine. Thank you. We'll call a meeting to order with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to sit as a licensing board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
We've got the holiday sales license renewals. We have up for renewal Ashway Mart, Brick Oven Restaurant, Captain Dave Seafood, Dunkin' Donuts in Ashway, Fenner Hill Country Club, Hack 'n' Livery General Store, Holly Tree Campground Pavilion Restaurant, Holy Cow (I love that name), Hopkinton Liquor Depot, Legend Bar and Grill, Lindbrook Golf Club, Lucky House Restaurant, Ma and Pa's Country Store, Main Street Pizza, Nicholas Greenhouse and Plant Farm, Hatchies Garden Center, Pete's Grocery, Spicer Market, Spring Street Market, Your Outfitters, Vatican Farm and Nursery, Village Place, which is Hines, Wood River Golf, and Wyoming Fruit and Vegetable. We've got a lot of businesses in town. Is there any discussion from the council? Barbara?
My understanding is the star next to Hack 'n' Livery, the star next to Legend's Bar and Grill, and the star next to Wyoming Fruit and Vegetable indicated no renewal application received?
Yes, it's typical that with some of them, because they're, some are business, that they oftentimes are a little bit late. There are some that do go out of business as well, so we might want to consider granting a subject to receipt of the applications to those that have not submitted, and then subject to all state and town regulations being current in regulation.
That's a good way to do it.
Doesn't have to trouble you on your next agenda. We'll make sure that gets taken care of, and if you would like a follow-up report, be happy to do so.
That would be a good idea.
What does this enable them, holiday sales license renewals? Whatever they want to do allows them to be open on holidays. It was something known as Sunday sales license before. It evolved. I seem to a holiday.
I thought it was holiday as in Christmas.
You're making them pay for Christmas, right?
Thank you for the clarif-
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to grant renewal to each license, subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue, except for Hack 'n' Livery General Store, the Legend's Bar and Grill, Wyoming Fruit and Vegetable would be subject to the receipt of the application, the payment of the fee, and subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
We have Wendy's.
I did Legends. I said Hack 'n' Livery, Legends, and Wyoming.
Is it better to rephrase that motion to say?
Legends gave it. All right, I'll make a motion to, I'd like a motion to have the renewal of the holiday sales licenses granted for each license, subject to all state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue, except for Hack 'n' Livery, the Main Street Pizza, and Wyoming Fruit and Vegetable, which would be subject to the receipt of application, payment of the fee, and the state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Before we get a second on that, how come you didn't say Holy Cow too?
Because Holy Cow didn't, oh.
Yeah, I thought you missed that one, yeah.
I did, I did miss that one.
So Holy Cow was included in that.
And Holy Cow's added.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wants to be, to speak on any of these? Okay.
I do have a question for our town clerk. Is it more practical to, because we might get an application beyond, I think you suggested that maybe we should include, like we got the application from Wendy Ames where, just tonight, just handed to us, in case any comes in after, after tonight, do you think that should be rephrased in case, because the next council meeting for two weeks, should we?
Well, I can follow up with a report if you like, and you can place those on your next agenda if you like, or I can follow up with a report indicating to you that this one has been received, this one has been received, that the fees that have been paid indicate as such, and also to let you know if there are anybody who's not admitted.
Yeah, but theoretically, the council has approved the license.
We just did.
Yeah, but, yeah, but only the ones that have applied, right?
But also the ones subject to the receipt of application.
You didn't put that in your motion.
Yeah, you must have closed your ears at that moment.
Okay, staying corrected.
Yeah, we took care of that.
Okay, because I thought you admitted that.
So you're all set?
Yes.
Not on the next agenda?
No, no, we're all set. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn as a licensing board and reconvene as a council?
So moved.
Second.
All right, next up is the growth management ordinance amendment. This is a hearing on chapter, a proposed amendment, chapter 159, section 12, sponsored by me, just for, to be convenient, because I happen to be around, but the proposed, it could have been by anyone, the proposed amendment would extend the effective date of the current growth management ordinance to June 30, 2012, and it will allow the planning board a little more time for their review and recommendation of the council, so that we could continue this, and it would continue no later than April 30, 2012. So all it did was primarily just to give them a little more time to review it. Anyone have any questions or comment from the council? Is there anyone in the public that wanted to speak on this? Okay. Is there a motion to continue the hearing or close the hearing, and we can set a date to consider the adoption of the ordinance?
When we make a motion to close the hearing, should we set a date in the same motion?
We can do that, sure.
I make a motion that we close the hearing and-
Set the date for?
The next council meeting.
Well, no, no, that's too soon.
Oh, is it too soon?
Oh, I'm sorry, just for a decision. No, that's planning time.
We want it to be done before the end of the month.
I'm sorry, you're right.
What's the date of the next council meeting?
The 19th.
Nineteen.
I make a motion that we close the hearing and it be put on the agenda for December 19.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any more comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Consent agenda. Is there anything to be pulled off of it before we approve it? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of November 7, 2011, except the transcript of October 3, 2011, as the record of the hearings, R.A.LBI, Inc., and Spicer Marketplace/Maroon, except the following report, animal control.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First public forum. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Dottie?
Dorothy Gardner, Canache Driftway, Oak Valley. I came here tonight to update you on the Hopkinton Conservation Commission. You know, every year, we request a certain amount of money with the, you know, we'd like to ask for more, we'd like to do a lot of projects, but really, I mean, the finances in the town limit us, and we attempt to limit ourselves. Usually, we do a lot of water testing, part of our budget is for supplies, and this year, what the Conservation Commission has done is they've gone out and they have cleared some of the trails on some of the land trust land. They, Harvey and some friends of his have gone through the river and have cleared out the underbrush and the snags and the overgrowth, so now you can actually go down the river. And we also have done some things that have required us to make, you know, make expenditures for document copying. We've asked for maps. And one thing that happened is the state of Rhode Island said that for this year, they're going to do some of the water testing. So we're actually going to have a bit of money left over, and what we plan to do with that money is to do some other water testing perhaps, and also to do some of the history of Blue Pond. And I just wanted, you know, in the spirit of being very transparent, I just wanted to update everyone so they wouldn't feel that, you know, we're putting something over on you. But it's for this year only, most likely, that the state is going to do the bulk of the water testing that we usually do, the streams, they do the temperature, contaminants, you know, the quality of the water, all of this they usually do, we usually pay for. But this year, I don't know if they have PhD candidates, I don't know if they've got a grant, I don't know if they've got minions running around at URI. I'm not really sure, but we certainly took advantage of it. We also plan to take photographs and take the information that we learned from the GPS classes. I didn't attend, but the rest of the council, the commission did. What they've done is they've learned how to use the town GPS, and they are going to map the trails that they've cleared, so that we can get them put on, put on maps, so that we could either sell the maps or make them available on the website, and perhaps eventually link in with some other towns, like the state has a listing of the maps in various areas, and we thought perhaps we'd be able to link in with them when it's done. And Matt's going to help us so far as mapping goes. We also plan to take some photographs and log them in on the GPS. And I think that's probably about all we've done recently, but I did want to bring you up to date and let you know that we've been active, and kind of we've got sweat equity, you know, and now we're going to spend some of the money in other areas. We're going to have, have maps made up of the town for the commission members, so that when we talk about a development or a change in zoning, that we're able to reference it on the map in a meeting altogether, so we all know what we're talking about and where the boundaries are. And that's about it.
Wonderful.
Okay?
I thought you were going to give us the money back, Todd.
Pardon me?
I thought you were going to give us the money back.
Well, I'm sure that if we have some left over, yeah, definitely. We get $1,600 a year.
These gifts just giving you a hard time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not a lot.
But it matters.
We make it go a long way.
Thank you very much.
Actually, can I ask?
Oh, Barbara. Don't leave yet.
I think it's really helpful to have that report from the Conservation Commission. One of the other things that I'm interested in is if you could keep us updated on the trails as they are available.
Oh, sure, sure.
I think that's very helpful.
Yes, yeah, we could do that.
Because I know you're going to be putting on the website and trying all of that, but it'd be really nice if someone came to the, to the meeting so that it can go on the town council meeting as well.
Right.
And public forum seems to be just fine.
Yeah, and it's going to take a while, of course, before the trails get on any maps. I mean, because Matt has, you know, a lot to do. I realize that part of his time is supposed to be devoted to the Conservation Commission, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a flowing thing, you know, and he still is behind on making us our own private maps, never mind integrating the GPS logging into the town maps. You know, it's a difficult job. Thank you.
Wait, don't leave yet. Tom?
Just very quickly, Dot, now we don't have to really get into it. Is Blue Pond completely def- gone? I mean, is it coming back, or do you guys know anything about it?
I don't know. This may be very helpful, that's all, you know, this may be very helpful.
You know, of course, we, some of us have the, you know, the hiking trail books, like the one for, you know, Mount Washington, etc., up north, but we have the local one. And if you end up, you're going to actually, somebody could go on the website and look up anybody who wanted to go for a hike and see where our hiking trails are.
Oh, yes, yes, that's the idea.
That would be wonderful, because a lot of people don't know. I have to explain, you drive down this road, and you look for this or that.
Take a ride at the rock.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Good.
So it's a good project. I think it's a good project for the Conservation Commission. It also helps us to work hand in hand with the land trust. So it's, it's really a good project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard under public forum? Yes, Mr. Kennedy?
Ronnie Kennedy, excuse me, 238 Main Street, Ashway. As you people probably know, there'll be a holiday stroll in the Ashway area this coming week, the 10th, I believe. And the Ashway Fire Department puts on a fireworks display, and I believe we asked the council for a donation two years ago. I don't think we asked last year, gave you a break, but we'd like to ask you for whatever you can afford would help the cause.
It's public forum, we can't answer anything.
Right, you can't say that.
No, Tom was just saying that he would recuse from that, but what we could do is we can put it on an agenda, on a, on another agenda for a future council meeting, so that we can find out how much we could donate for that effort.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ron, before you leave, while you have the microphone, do you, because it's not on our agenda, but you have the option of filling us in on anything you want about the holiday stroll. You want to, you want to talk about it a little more, some of the activities that go on?
About the holiday stroll?
About the stroll itself.
Yeah, well, it's, it's been an active day in town for a number of years now, and I believe, I believe it's getting bigger every year. We have hayrides, I think.
Yes.
I'm not certain whether there's a charge to that or not, but I thought I heard someone say there was no charge, but I'm not certain of that. The fire department has sent out letters to individuals in the town asking for donations, and some of them have been pretty generous, and some of them have turned their head, which always happens. So, but there are a number of houses that are open in the town that people walk through, certain areas of the buildings, of the homes. And I think there's a couple of new things, but I'm not, I'm not really up to speed on, but I thought there were two new things coming in that will be stationed at the Crandall House. Of course, we have the churches have different bazaars. Our Lady of Victory has a bazaar, the church down on Maxon Street, and the Seventh Day Adventist. And then, I believe, the Grange has a supper. Is that in the evening time?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, and that's at the fire station?
Yes.
So there are a number of things, and I think we're going to have good weather.
Do you know what time the fireworks start?
Around 7 o'clock.
Around 7 o'clock.
Yes.
7:15.
Is it Saturday?
Yes. I also heard just last night that Bill Champagne, the president of the ambulance, is, they're going, the ambulance association is going to be there this year, and they're going to provide hot cocoa and maybe some little, you know-
Right, right. I believe that's a joint venture.
Some little something to eat.
Yeah, I believe that's a joint venture with the fire department.
Oh, is it?
But I'm, I'm not certain, you know, I haven't talked to the ambulance corps, but I, I know there was mention of talking to the ambulance corps and having a joint venture. So it's kind of a, you know, get people together and, and a little homey thing and, just show off our end of the town. And the fireworks display, excellent.
It's very nice, yeah.
Excellent. I believe last year went about 20 minutes, and it's as good as any display around.
Yeah, it's great. In the middle of the winter, well, almost.
It is, it's really-
It's very clear.
We welcome any participation.
Crandall Field, and it's marvelous. It's like the fireworks go right over-
Just Park Field, that's where it is. The fireworks are at Crandall Field.
They're at Crandall Field, yes, yes.
Thank you.
There's a few-
Bill?
Thank you. Just as a point of interest, the entire scheduled events and the applicable times of those events are on the town's website.
Beautiful, good.
They did get the trolley back this year.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe the Grange had something to do with that, to get the trolley back. But you can, you can ride that thing for free all throughout the town, and it makes different stops at different places. You can get off, go in, visit the, it's probably going to stop at the Ashbury School, which is, there's a bazaar there, yeah. They actually moved their bazaar up a week, so it corresponded with the event.
Ashbury School has really put a lot into this project.
You do the breakfast, you do the breakfast with Santa at the fire station.
I'm sorry?
You do breakfast with Santa in the morning.
Right, 8 o'clock.
At 8 o'clock, till I think 10, 11, somewhere around in there.
I think it ends around 10.
Okay. And then, I believe the Presbyterian Church has lunch.
Presbyterian Church also has a bazaar, as well as the Catholic Church in town.
Yes.
So we have a number with Ashway School as well. It's a marvelous day.
But you can take the trolley everywhere. And what's really nice for anybody out there that hasn't been, as soon as it gets dark, they light up the luminaria. It starts from the Ashway Library, comes up 216, all the way down Route 3 to Maxon Street, and then back to the Presbyterian Church. I believe around 6 o'clock, they have the live nativity at the Presbyterian Church, where with Mary coming in on the donkey, and they have the animals, and it's, if you haven't seen it, it's really neat to actually see that.
Thanks for the assistance.
All right. Well done. Let's see, council president's report. If you look in your packet, in the reports section, there is a letter from, it's after the email. There's a letter in here that the town of Exeter wrote to their Senator Francis Amar Jr. And if you remember, last year, we were involved in expressing our opposition to House Bill 5554 sub A in the Senate bill that would essentially just throw the conference of plan out the window and our zoning too. So it was Brian Kennedy who informed us back then that this proposal has come up every year for the past 10 years, that then they just, it never made it anywhere. It just happened that last year, it actually, we unfortunately were being told it might come out of committee, so everybody got on to it. Now, Exeter has taken a proactive approach, and they decided to send out a letter to their representative, and it's, and it's a, it's a wonderful two-page letter, and I'd like to see our town agree that we would support Exeter's effort, and that we would let our local legislative people have a copy of this letter, that we support it, and that we also would like to be informed if this bill comes back up. And Exeter, in their second page, if you look, they actually, let's see, where did they, they, oh, here it is.
Here it is.
They said, it's on the front page, and they said, not only would they like to be informed if these bills come back up, but they want to be informed if any bills come up that would include anything to do with zoning, that would include words or definitions of buildable in, conservation development, lot areas. So they, they really were trying to do their best to make sure that we catch it. So I just think if we send this letter to our local representatives and say we support it-
Which happens to be missed as well.
So if you'd like me to do that, you can just tell me to do it, and I'll do it.
Yes.
Okay, I'll do it.
I think that's excellent, because it really needs to be followed and watched.
Okay. I imagine they will, but we'll remind them. Yeah, we don't need a vote, you just tell me to do it, I'll do it.
Right.
Okay. So we'll move on? Okay, town managers' report?
Thank you. Just very briefly, during November, I had the opportunity to attend the Charahoe Tri-Town Task Force Parent Information Night that was held at the Charahoe Middle School. There are numerous law enforcement personnel who sat on the panel to discuss the Rhode Island social host law and provide input to parents committed to stopping underage drinking and drug use. It was about an hour-long meeting that was very informative, it was well-covered by the media, and it was attended by approximately 60 parents, teachers, schools' officials, and law enforcement personnel. And I thought that they did an outstanding job in making a presentation, and the parents were very appreciative of that night, so that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions on this topic?
Oh, one, I do have one question. Does anybody know if the fourth child is out of the hospital? I mean, I have not heard anything concerning-
I don't think so, Tom, but.
I can check on it for you if you wish.
Yeah, I was just wondering how he was making out.
All right. New business, set a hearing date for the tax stabilization request by LBI, Inc. Lisa, do you have a recommendation for us?
I believe, see, I've already got this out to the three individuals, the tax collector, tax assessor, and building and zoning official for their review. Tax collector's already signed off on it, tax assessor will sign off tomorrow, building and zoning will do after they have to sign the original. I believe you could hear it on December 19. I've got the ad ready, so I want to go in the paper tomorrow.
What else is up for that night?
We've got the-
We've got the Spicer.
Decision.
That's for a decision.
That's for a decision.
Wasn't any hearings scheduled?
No.
No? Okay, so I guess we could, yeah, we could put it that night. Okay. All right, so it'll be 12:09, 19, I mean.
The last time that you guys did one of these tax stabilization requests, I went back and looked, and I had done kind of a cheat sheet for you on what you needed to be looking for and all of that, so I'm going to be sending that to Lisa tomorrow, and ask her to put it in your packets with a copy of the policy, so that you'll be right up to speed on it.
Thank you.
Except the findings, perhaps?
Yeah.
You do?
Yes.
She saves everything. It's amazing you can find it, though.
Unless you wanted to have a copy.
That's great, thank you.
And you have the little cheat sheet, too?
Yes.
Wow. All right, good. Okay. Next up, the fiscal year ending June 30, 2011 financial audit, and the auditors' report. And the auditors are here tonight, along with our finance director. Would you like to introduce them, or town, town manager, maybe you'd like to do that?
Oh, thank you. I'll introduce Laura Kenyon, our finance director, who can introduce our auditors, please. Thank you.
This is Cheryl and Pat of Baker &amp; Company. They are our auditors, so any questions you have over the report, feel free to ask them, and if they can answer, I'll, I did.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to do a brief overview of the audit report, so that's the green bound document. Page 1 and 2 of the report is your audit opinion. The town received an unqualified audit opinion.
Could you speak just a little bit louder, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The town received an unqualified audit opinion.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The town received an unqualified audit opinion, which means that the financial statements are materially presented in accordance with GAAP, so that's a good thing. On page 13, starts the financial statements. Pages 3 to 12 are like an executive summary, basically, of the report, but I'll start off on page 13. At the bottom of page 13, the governmental activities ended the year with net assets of 9.1- one million dollars, so that's your net equity for governmental assets. Your business-type activities ended the year with net assets of four hundred and one thousand. And the land trust ended the year with net assets of one million six ninety-eight. These are your government-wide statements, so they are full accrual, they include all your capital assets, all of your debt. If you flip the page to page fourteen, you'll see towards the bottom of the page, change in net assets.
Say that, I'm sorry, page fourteen?
Page fourteen.
Change in net assets.
Change in net assets. Governmental activities increased net assets in fiscal year eleven by three twenty-four eight fourteen. The business-type activities, which is the water fund, had a small loss of twenty-seven hundred ninety-one. And the land trust had a small loss of thirty-seven thousand three seventeen. The next page over is page fifteen, which is your governmental funds. Those are the funds that you're more familiar with, you're more used to looking at. The general fund, and then you have all your other governmental funds, which would be your special revenue funds, your capital project funds, those are all included in that second column. The general fund ended the year, towards the bottom of the page, with a total fund balance of four point two million. That's your net equity. Your other governmental funds ended the year with fund balance of one million If you flip to page seventeen, you'll see the revenues and expenditures for the year. About three-quarters of the way down the page, you'll see the general fund increased its fund balance by four hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. All your other governmental funds increased by one fifty-eight, two fifty-one. Pages nineteen and twenty are basically the same information as your business activities. It's the water fund, presented separately, so we've already kind of looked at that. Starting on page twenty-three are your notes to your financial statement, which just provide more detail about what's in the financial statements. And your budgetary statement is on page forty-four of the report. So the town ended the year with a budgetary surplus at the bottom of five twenty-five, five sixty-five. And that included the use of one hundred thousand dollars in fund balance, which had been budgeted. That's a very brief overview of the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask?
Want to start, Scott? Do you have anything?
No, it's just that I noticed that you made some recommendations on staffing.
Yes.
And that, of course, we're very, very financially sensitive, although we did let the manager, we did throw a staffing position for the managers' office help in this budget. But could you go over the, any concerns you might have about pensions in the town? Because I know you mentioned that.
Pensions?
The unfunded.
Oh, the unfunded, okay.
Page forty-five, I guess.
Page forty-five. So, the town is included in the municipal employees' retirement system, which is part of the state of Rhode Island. So, the most current information that's available is presented on page forty-five under six thirty-ten. That was their most recent report that's available at the time this report was printed. So, it's broken out between the police pension and then all the general municipal employees. So, the police pension, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and ten, has an unfunded liability of two point four million. And the general municipal employees' pension has an unfunded liability of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
How much, one hundred and what?
It's one fifty-eight, two forty-two. It's the bottom line under.
It's not bad.
Here.
It's not bad, right?
Yeah, it's ninety-six percent funded, which is.
Pretty good.
Which is pretty good.
But the police is not.
Well, still, sixty-three percent.
Sixty-three percent.
But how could it, you know, you have to ask yourself, how could the pension fund go from a half a million in two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten, two point four million, you know? I mean.
I mean, it all has to do with.
It makes you faint.
Yeah. It all has to do with the value of the investments. They did change some of the actuarial assumptions for that six thirty-ten report. They lowered their assumed rate of return. So, you know, and the, the market has been unfavorable also, so that will increase, you know, as things adjust. And that's why every year you get your, your rate will change based on what's happening, so.
Mm-hmm. Now this.
What is their, their rate of return? They lowered it to, what, five percent?
Seven point five.
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, what was it?
Eight point five.
Well, you're not even getting seven and a half.
Well, but it's over time, though, Sylvia, it's a lot, it's not just, you know.
Oh, it's not year by year.
It's years, it's years.
It's over twenty years.
They pulled it out.
But even seven and a half, that's pretty high.
I agree.
Even, I mean, that's ideal.
If they lowered anymore, you really have to make some.
I was like to, could you get into your concerns in the report on the segregation of duties?
Sure.
And the finance director and the tax clerk's office?
And just to point out, on page forty-six, it tells you what the actuarial assumptions were at six thirty-ten. So if you were interested, it has the rate of return and all the other information there. Okay. So, we had material weakness and a significant deficiency, which are on page fifty-eight. These have been in the report for a number of years. It basically comes down to segregation of duties and having small offices, but we're, we're obligated to let you know that, you know, you have segregation of duties issues. I mean, internal controls comes down to cost benefit, so, you know, you have to weigh the cost versus the benefit. But we are obligated to let you know about these. If you have any questions, they, they have pretty much remained the same for the past several years.
Yeah, I think you've made this report like this every year for the last five, six, seven years.
Yeah, and it's, you know, short of hiring, you know, you have to hire additional staff, additional benefits. I mean, that's kind of, you know, the cost-benefit thing, but we're obligated to let you know.
Yeah, short of that, because I know the people want us to keep taxes in check. Short of that, what's, could you go into any solutions for the town to address your concerns? Because I know you, I guess, do signatures on things. I think you're looking for accountability and, you know, roles, like the finance director has a role, and the assistant has it. I've noticed that was broken down in your report.
I mean, it comes down to basically trying to segregate, having custody of assets such as cash, imposing transactions to the general ledger, and then also authorizing transactions. So when those three things, when one person has control over that, those three aspects, that's where you get the problem. Because the offices are so small here in finance, you know, there's only two people, so Laura has to, you know, she authorizes things and she reconciles things, but she also posts, you know, posts things to the general ledger. So if she were to stop doing that, then, you know, you might have to hire someone up, you know, you get into that thing.
I just, you know, you know, the, I understand what you're saying, because I was wondering, is there a solution for this? Obviously, we really can't afford staff, we gotta.
Yeah, it would be difficult to do without additional staff. I mean, I think they're doing the best they can over there, certainly.
Do you don't think it's a major concern for the town council to be concerned about?
It's something to be aware of, basically. You know, that there is, you know, you do have segregation duties issues, you know, over there. But I don't, you know, unless you're willing to spend additional money, I don't really see how, do you know what I'm saying, how, how you can really.
It's not a top priority. It shouldn't be a likely.
It's a material weakness.
Yeah, it's, it's something to be aware of, you know, when you're looking at your financial information, that, you know, you have a small staff and they have a lot of control over things. That's why you have, you know, independent reviews and reconciliations and that type of thing. So it's something to be aware of, I would say. I mean, I don't know, if you have any suggestions.
Yeah, it's just, there's, there's just a little bit maybe higher risk as a council. You're aware of this, so as things come across your desk, you're aware of it as well.
We just can't hire as many people as people would like us to hire.
I mean, ideally, you would like to have those segregation of duties, but like Cheryl said, it's the cost-benefit, but we have a responsibility to tell you, so there is that risk out there. So you have to be aware of it.
I have no further questions at this time.
Tom, do you have anything?
What is the unassigned fund balance? Where would I find that?
That is on page fifteen for the general fund. Is that what you're looking?
Yes.
Page thirty?
Seventeen.
Page fifteen, or actually fifteen or, actually fifteen. On page fifteen, towards the bottom of the page, under fund balances, there's a really long list of categories. The bottom one says unassigned. It's three million eight twenty-five, two forty-nine. So that means it hasn't been obligated in any manner for any other purpose, basically. And you'll see the list. If you start at the top, there's, you know, the general fund had thirty-one hundred dollars in prepaid expenditure, so that's not spendable. There's thirty-four hundred dollars for public safety. There's one hundred and two thousand for employee relations, two forty-three for property taxes, twenty-eight for public works, and then twenty-four for grant matching. Some of these categories used to be separate funds, under special revenue funds in the other column, but because of the new Gatsby that was issued, that was implemented by the town this year, they no longer met the definition of a special revenue fund, so they had to be collapsed into the general fund. So that's why you're seeing those other amounts in there. But it's indicated that they're either restricted or committed, so they're for a certain purpose versus unassigned.
Okay, one other question. What would Hopkins need for an unassigned fund balance to avoid TANs?
To avoid TANs? Well, you guys haven't issued.
Yeah, it depends on when your tax bills are issued and, you know.
I know we moved the tax date back.
Correct.
So we could.
It depends on how quickly you collect the taxes too, and when, you know, debt payments come due and that.
But, I mean, isn't there a certain amount that we should be able to retain? Is it a percentage?
Like a minimum fund balance?
Yeah, what's the minimum?
Well, let me let you know that our finance director in the past, because it's something we always ask, you know, when we have a budget cycle, but in the, I think her definition before was two months. It's recommended to have two months of operating. So do you concur? Does that?
Yeah, because if your bills didn't go out till September, you still are incurring payroll debt.
All right, we want you to, on the record, tell us that you agree with that a lot.
Yes, you agree with that.
Because that's what we, we always ask on any treasure we have. So that's a good method, two months.
Yeah, based on when your tax bills go out and the bills you have coming due, yes.
All right, so that's, okay. Not that we don't believe you, but I wanted to get it on the record, because we always refer to the auditors, and this is what they recommend. Well, now we have it on the record that you agree. Okay.
Yes.
Tom, you have anything else?
That was it, that was all I had.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, page thirteen.
Okay.
Under the land trust, the one million six nine eight one eight seven.
Yes.
Does that include the million-dollar bond that we have not bonded yet?
No, it's, at June thirtieth, you still had a bond anticipation note, which is under liabilities, just above, it's like the second, actually the third section.
Current liabilities.
Yes. So that was still a note at the time.
So that million.
So that is not included, so that's your net. So your assets minus your liabilities is the one point six ninety-eight.
So one point six nine eight, one million six nine eight, does not include the additional million that we'll be.
No.
Putting toward the land trust, the bond.
No.
Okay, so it's not included. So we still have another, so the land trust effectively will have net assets when we put the bond in at two million six ninety-eight, effectively.
No, because the bond, when the bond proceeds come in, they basically go out the door to pay that liability off. It's not a revenue source.
Mm-hmm.
Because that money was already spent on the purchase.
Purchasing land in the past.
So it's, that one point six includes the net value of the land in it. So I guess that would be your asset, is the, is the capital asset.
But we haven't put the bond out yet.
Well, as soon as you, when that is bonded and those proceeds come in, that money goes right out the door again to pay off the note.
So that, so that million under liabilities basically goes away to wash?
Yes.
So they still have one six ninety-eight.
It goes from a short-term obligation to a long-term obligation. So it's, yeah, that will be replaced with just a long-term liability versus a short-term liability.
And then on page fourteen.
Can I, oh, can I just ask Laura a question?
Is the town consuming that liability or is the land trust?
Land trust.
The land trust, so the bond is going on the land trust financial statement, or on the town's?
Town's financial. Oh, it is going on the town.
Okay. So if, if it's going on the town's, then yes, it will increase to two point six.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
I thought it was still a liability.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Right, so it's gonna go, once it goes on, because this is the town, it's going to be two point six nine eight million.
So your liabilities will go up.
Right, okay, so I am correct, thank you.
Yes.
That's one, page fourteen. I have a question. Again, this is on the land trust component unit.
Okay.
Where did the thirty-seven thousand go? They lost thirty-seven thousand? Actually, they didn't lose it, I mean, it obviously went.
If you go, if you go across just above general revenues, this statement kind of, you read it across, so.
Yeah.
Under land trust, there were seventy thousand dollars in expenses.
Fourteen.
They had five hundred and four dollars in, like, miscellaneous income, and then they had thirty-one eight seventy-two in grants and contributions. So for the year, they did spend more than they took in, in revenues.
They did spend more than they took in, effectively.
Yes, they did.
Okay. That answers that.
But that seventy thousand does include depreciation, which is.
How much was that?
I, oh, actually.
That would be on a separate page.
I can tell you where that is.
It's not really a loss, it's depreciation.
Depreciation.
Yeah.
Oh, depreciation was sixteen hundred, so it's not that big of a.
It's accumulated, yeah.
Yeah. So, yes, they did spend more than they took in last year.
Okay, so that's the only thing you're really saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Not that they lost it somewhere.
No, no, that, they had an actual.
Because when you said loss.
Oh, yeah, they, their expenses were more than their revenues, basically.
Right. There wasn't a loss. Okay, page nineteen is the water, water supply?
Yeah.
You had said there was a loss this year?
If you flip to page twenty, that, that gives you, that's the operating statement, so it's the revenues less the expenses, plus the interest they earned. So the change in net assets was a negative twenty-seven ninety-one.
Negative twenty-seven ninety-one, two thousand seven ninety-one.
Two thousand seven hundred ninety-one.
Does that have to do, that's, actually, it might be a Sylvia question.
Bills, bills, not everyone paid.
Well, I mean, is that the school in particular, Charahoe, has a big debt outstanding?
Will they have a debt outstanding also?
Is that part of that, the two seven nine one, is that part of that this year, or do they owe, when, or, I don't remember when that bill got sent out.
It's not, it's actually, that's revenue.
I can't, I can't hear you, Laura. Can't see you.
I can defer back to the auditors on that, but revenue would include as if everyone had paid. You will see on the previous page, there's an accounts receivable out there. This is actually a reduction, but depreciation is in this, it's not like there's a, it's not a loss.
Oh, that's right, depreciation of ten thousand.
There's a figure in that.
On page twenty, so.
Back to page, oh, there you are. See the depreciation right there?
Ten thousand.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the depreciation. I'm just wondering if that's because we don't have receivables.
Yeah, we do.
We do have receivables. People have paid their bills?
This?
No, you're saying that you have receivables, they haven't paid their bills?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have twenty-three thousand seven hundred and two of bills that have not been paid toward the water.
Correct.
Supply, okay, that's fine. Because I know we are having a discussion with Charahoe. I don't know if that's a major portion of it, or if there are many miners.
Many miners.
It's, the twenty-three thousand, the second billing is done right at the end of the year, so it's not like, you know, they don't have time to actually pay them.
Okay.
But this statement on page twenty is full accrual, which means it reflects all of your revenues, whether you've collected them or not. It reflects all of your expenditures with the cashes actually going out the door.
Okay, okay. That answered that, and I think the rest, the rest of it is okay. Thank you. Grace, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple quick comments. On page eight, can you just comment on the debt service?
Did you say eight?
Page eight, yeah. On the debt service the town has, which I think is very low in conjunction to their, their income. Can you maybe just reflect on that as a whole, as far as the town, as far as the debt service, it's really not that extensive, as far as I can see.
Okay, so this, this, actually on page, do you mean? Okay, so this, this, actually, on page, do you mean on page nine, where it says interest, or am I in the wrong?
The general liabilities versus the income, you know, I think page eight kind of just illustrates that pretty good.
Well, you were primarily wanting to know what the debt was.
Yeah, just, you know, I think, just comment generally on the debt service that we have as a town, I think it's very low, and so that was really all I was looking for.
Actually, there's more, even more detail on pages thirty-four and thirty-five. It gives you, it tells you how much the town, as of June thirtieth, you had nine hundred and eleven thousand in bonds, eighty-one thousand in leases, and your compensated absences were one seventy-four, so that's, that's a lot for a town. If you look at page thirty-five, it does give the debt service maturity on your bond, so it tells you, you know, over the next five years, what it will cost the town each year going forward.
Can you, on the same note, on page eleven, can you just explain the paragraph on the state of Rhode Island imposes a limit of three percent of fair market value? Because that shows where our debt is.
Yes.
If you can just explain where the town stands, where the state is concerned.
My second question, where do those figures come from? Because I couldn't find them.
So your, the town has a law passed, basically, that only municipalities can't pass. Oh, I'm sorry. The state has a law, basically, saying that municipalities can't incur debt over three percent of the fair market value of their taxable property. So if, in, at the town, in the town of Hopkinton, basically, as of June thirtieth, eleven, the fair market value of your property was, I'm sorry, the three percent of your fair market value of your property, so that's based on your tax roll?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Your, the net assessed value on your tax roll. Your limit was thirty-two million eight ninety-one seven ninety-eight, and your debt subject to the limit was only one point nine million, so you're significantly under the state's debt limit.
I think that's great.
Yes.
And I think it's something to make sure people are aware of.
It's a lot of money to allow even three percent. Good grief.
I know, but we are...
We're well below it, but I mean...
The state allows that, it doesn't mean we should do it.
Of course not.
And we haven't, but I mean, we're amazingly low on debt. Our debt ceiling is very low. I have another question.
I'm not quite done yet.
Oh, Frank?
Just, that was my second question, was that paragraph, but just a quick comment on page nine. In the middle there, under general government, from ten to eleven, it looks like it increased about nine percent or so. I guess, do we know why that increased? You know, it increased a lot more than the other departments.
What increased, revenue or expense? What are you looking at?
The activity, governmental activities from ten to eleven, under the general program expenses. I guess, you see, that's like the third paragraph down. Program expenses, general government, from two thousand ten to two thousand eleven increased...
See, those are all the funds together, it's not just your general fund, it's all the general capital projects, special revenue funds together. So one year, if you had a capital project or special revenue fund or grant, you might have more activity than, so it might not be consistent, because that's the government-wide, so everything's combined, and I'm trying to think whether, do you recall? Actually, Laura prepares that, those pages, but I don't know if you...
And I'm going to...
You go based on what we provide you.
Right, but I'm going back to the budgetary schedule on page forty-four to see what the difference is between one hundred and twenty-nine sitting there.
Okay.
Do they have...
The difference between the two years?
Yep.
And that does relate back to the labor effort from the federal government, the additional expenditures, so just to give you a quick indication of what...
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
All right, you missed something, Barbara? Yeah, just page nine, the same page. The government activities, twenty-ten to twenty-eleven, the under revenues, operating capital grants and contributions, twenty-ten was six million four twelve, twenty-eleven, five million six six seven. Would I assume that that has to do with the grants, that might be Bill and Laura, coming out of the twenty-ten flood? That's why one year would be higher on capital grants and contributions?
Well, that's not...
Page nine, revenues, government...
They're together.
I believe the flood money is actually going to be steady?
No, that'd be in the grants, but flood money?
No, go up.
Yeah, that's some of it, but I'm trying to think what else is some...
It's operating capital grants and contributions, but I wondered if that had something to do with the twenty-ten flood? Because I know we got quite a number of grants and capital expenses from the feds.
Again, I'm just going to refer, because that is a consolidated, on page nine, it's a consolidated schedule of many, many different special revenues and items that we refer back to page forty-four.
Well, let me get there, hold on. Okay.
And the same type of activity under the state grants and aids type of thing is up, you know, two hundred and seventy, and again, a lot of that is, a hundred and thirty-three of that's flood.
Is what?
Flood.
That's what I was thinking, is that, some of this must have to do with the twenty-ten flood?
You are grants and...
Okay, yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
Yeah, I go for all of them.
I'm set, that's what I wanted to know.
It's great, I think it's a great report, it's very handy, helpful for us, I think, to put it in writing notebook.
Do you have anything else, Frank?
No, I'm good, I'm good, thanks.
I wanted to ask you, on your management letter on page two, to the benefit of the public, would you explain what you mean by, in just regular language, at the top of the page, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, the sentence, in addition, none of the misstatements detected as a result of audit procedures and corrected by management were material, either individually or in the aggregate, to each opinions, to each opinion units, financial statements taken as a whole? Could you define for the public what you mean by material, or either individually? Is there another way to put that? Because sometimes, you know, taxpayers will look at this, and, you know, I mean, if you're not used to reading audits...
I mean, material is, you know, what somebody would consider, like, if there was an error in the financial statements, basically, what, you know, somebody would consider it to be important, I guess. You know, obviously, there may be, I hate to say, an error is not important, but, you know, obviously, there are some things that may be incorrect in a financial statement or in a general ledger that are clearly inconsequential. You know, and it varies based on the size of the organization, their assets, their liabilities. For the town, you have different funds, so we calculate an amount for each fund. I don't have the amounts with me, so I can't tell you specifically a dollar amount, but it's basically, when we say material, you know, based on our guidance from the AICPA, we basically, you know, calculate a dollar amount of, you know, what's considered material, or, you know, anything else would not be material, so the financial statements are basically, you know, materially correct. And, you know, obviously, when, you know, we look at, you know, when we do an audit, we do not, you know, go into a town and check every single piece of paper, and check every disbursement, and every receipt, and every single thing that happens in the town, so we have to use materiality as a guide, basically.
Do you just randomly...
We do different things, we use materiality, we randomly select some things to see how a system's working, so we do different procedures to basically...
Check things.
Check things, and, you know, to satisfy ourselves that, you know, the systems that the town has told us, so, you know, we'll go in and say, ask Laura and Agnes, all right, well, how do you process payroll? So then we'll check to see that what they just told us, that's how they process payroll, so, and we use that in our procedures to determine what we're going to do. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yes, yes, it does. I wanted to note specifically that, in reference to their, there's always a, of course, quite frankly, an interest from us, individually, and also taxpayers, too, when it comes to the fund balance. I mean, the treasurer gets the calls every year, what's left over, we want to know how much left over, how, you know, what is our fund balance, and as the new terminology, it used to be restricted or unrestricted, and now is this new term, I don't care, unassigned, we can call it whatever we want, but we need to know what that amount is, which you've told us, it's around three point eight million. The treasurer took it upon herself to, it's nice to do ten years, so you can see trends, whether it's taxes, or, in this instance, the fund balance, and she did do some work on that, and did trends here, she gave us an insert tonight for page fifty-one. Specifically, when we go back ten years, from two thousand and two up to two thousand and eleven, I thought it was important to, for the public, to know that the unreserved, or now the new term, the unassigned fund balance back in two thousand and two was three point eight four five million. And, right, you know, this is not something, this is something that the finance has done.
Additional, yes.
And in two thousand and eleven, it's now gone up to three point eight four five million, oh, excuse me, three point eight two five million. So there's been a, you don't have that in the audit, there's been a difference of about twenty thousand. In other words, when we go back ten years, the fund balance was, the unassigned, I shouldn't say, the unassigned fund balance, was actually about twenty thousand higher than it is today, and over those ten years, it has taken ten years to finally get back to a position that was reflective of two thousand and two, because some terrible things happened in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, there were huge amounts of funding taken to use in the operating budget to get the tax rate not to be quite so severe. So the fund balance went, dipped way down into the, down as far as, the lowest point was two point six million. So the point is that, over time, it did gradually get back, and it did take ten years, and it's been specifically the past few years that we fortunately had a, kind of an even keel on things, where we haven't had great differences in what we've needed and what we've had left over. And that is in part due to all the department heads, you know, trying to really work together to keep our expenses down. It also has, of course, Charahoe makes a big impact on how many students we have every year, and, but anyway, I just, I wanted to let everybody know that we're finally getting back to where we were once upon a time, ten years ago. And of course, ten years ago, three point eight million was on a much smaller budget, too. So our three point eight million is now what we have, but so far, we've managed not to have a tax anticipation note, is this the second year?
Yes.
And it happens to coincide with your being here. Oh, what a coincidence. She's very careful about when monies go out, when we buy capital, trying to get departments to hold off so that the cash flow doesn't, if you keep an eye on those things, it makes sense, it's our own checkbook, we do that, and she watches our checkbook, so I wanted to thank her. Now, Laura gave us a report on October twenty-sixth, there was a report, which accounts for the funding, the surplus left over, because on the face of it, you'd think, wow, how did we happen to get over half a million left over? How did that happen? And she detailed exactly how that did come to be. She noted that, and we can thank the tax collector for getting people up to date on their taxes, past due taxes, and as a matter of fact, the collection amount, that's our delinquent that we budget for every year, was in, up by two hundred and fifty-four thousand, that was an increase over what we budgeted, because there was a tax sale primarily, and they owed back taxes, and that made quite a difference. The collection rate that we estimated, we thought it was ninety-six, it ended up being ninety-seven, and some of the other items were, the state of Rhode Island did pay us the motor vehicle excise tax in the amount of sixty-four thousand, and that was not budgeted, because we didn't know whether or not they were going to do that. There was also an increase in the hotel tax and the corporate service tax, that was about nineteen thousand. The largest, according to a report, the largest department that worked toward cutting their budget was the Public Works, and that amount was, well, forty thousand was saved because of the timing of new hires, so that was a little different. People weren't hired right away, so that, that saved forty thousand. The other one, however, was twenty-seven thousand in, because the Public Works kept their expenses right down to the bare minimum. Other budgets throughout, as she noted, throughout different departments were able to cut or not spend a hundred thousand dollars, and Charahoe did give us money that we had, every year lately, we've been budgeting what we anticipate state aid to be, and if we don't make that amount, Charahoe has agreed to, if we don't receive the state aid that we budgeted, they've agreed to give us that amount back, and that amount was twenty-one thousand. See if I can get the right number here. Yes, they gave us twenty-one thousand, and in total, Charahoe did reimburse the town two hundred and thirty-three thousand in total. I guess those are the highlights of that report. But it's nice, it's nice to have the breakout, so we can see, because it's not as simple as we overbudgeted, or something was padded. It was, it had a lot to do with that tax collections. I didn't, I don't think that was it, that was all I had. Were there any other questions for, from anybody? Or is there anyone in the public that has any questions for the auditors? I want to thank you very much for coming down, we haven't had the auditors down, actually, for some years, so we appreciate your...
It's been a few years, I think I was here, I think I was standing in show, I think it was about five or six years ago, so that's...
I think you do a really nice report, it's actually relatively easy to understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura, was there anything else you want to, I know you, Mike, you're just so Mike shy. That's okay, as long as you handle the finances, we're all right, you can be Mike shy all you want. I guess we're all set? Thank you. All right, let's see. Next up on the agenda, Charahoe budget format changes. Councilor Capalgo attended a meeting on Wednesday with the superintendent, Brian Stanley, and members from the council of Richmond and Charleston, so you can report on that.
We had, we had an eight o'clock meeting, Henry Oppenheimer from Richmond and Dan Slattery from Charleston, and we discussed the way the budget is presented to the towns. We will always have the one hundred and thirty-seven page budget, we will always have that, it'll come to the councils, it'll come to the town hall, and it'll be on the website. They obviously won't print the one hundred and thirty-seven for all of the people at the financial town meeting, but what we've asked them to do is to make the executive summary page more precise. It was, it went from a sixteen-page executive summary several years ago to a one-page back and front this year. We didn't feel that was enough information for us to really find that this would go to this, and they were totaled out correctly. We've asked them, in the main budget, to give us subtotals per the hundred series or the two hundred series, we're going to get true subtotals as well as the totals, so that we can, we can add them up. And then on the executive summary, we will break it down to about twenty more categories of the largest expenditures, like pensions, not just, not just instruction, which would be the teachers, but pension costs or transportation costs. We'll break this down on the executive summary page, so that we can look at it more precisely. Utilities will be one.
Salaries, too.
Salaries, but it's salaries under instruction, and then if there's, if there's a miscellaneous, like maybe guidance counselors and librarians, if they put a miscellaneous topic in there, they will put a footnote to explain what that, what that is, and if they have any issues, they'll footnote them, so that we can relate one number to another. But they are going to break it down, so that each category, because they have one hundreds, two hundreds, you know, all the way up to nine hundreds, but we're going to break those down, or they are going to break them down into more precise categories, so that we can follow...
into more precise categories, so that we can follow the numbers a little bit better. The other thing that Brian Stanley said may be difficult, and I would agree with him, it probably is, he may be able to do it for this year and last year, I doubt he can go back further, is he was interested in giving us the, because what they still give us now is a budget number and an actual. The budget and actual that we have been asking for, and as of last year, they started giving us budgets and actuals. But what Brian brought up is that there's the audited actual, not, we have actual numbers, but we also have audited actuals. He isn't sure he can go back and get an audited actual to do the breakdown the way we've asked. He's going to try for this year and maybe the prior, but after that, the years before that was an entirely different format. So, he really can't, I don't think reasonably he can do that, because we're talking apples and oranges. But I thought the meeting went very well. They did understand how we need more information, because we have different constituencies. We're not talking to just CPAs or to council members, and we're used to going through budgets, but we have our standard, you know, normal citizens in the town that need to have a little better breakdown, so that they can understand it. They were very helpful that way, so there's going to be some changes to the main 137 page, but the big change will be the executive summary will be expanded, so we can read them, and we can actually add things up, and they add up. Rather than the way we've had them in the past, where we really couldn't find where they were doing percentages to add them up. And if there's a problem, they will give us a footnote to say where to look for.
Wait, does the council have any questions for Barbara? I think she's just stood.
No, it sounds great.
Yeah.
I mean, there are things that we've been asking for, for years.
And they started by already doing the budget and actual, and then they had the Rhode Island, you know, ride, it's just making it even more complex, which I think is very helpful when you want to see the 137 pages. It's very good to break everything out. But we do need an executive summary that is breaking down the major categories and showing budget and actual, budget and actual, for the last several weeks.
Was that topic, Barbara, of the revised budget, or explanations for the budget? Part of the omnibus topic as well?
Well, I think we're probably going to bring it up on the omnibus as well.
I thought, I thought there was some kind of an agenda that had that, too.
But both Henry and Dan and I agreed, and we will, you know, so if people have complaints, talk to us, and we'll try to explain what we've done. Their concern is they don't want to keep changing the format every year, which is understandable, but we need a format that we can understand from that newer.
It's run of the count.
Yeah. The newer format, which is incredibly difficult to understand for human beings.
Donnie, you had a question? Could you come up to the mic?
Sure, sure. I don't want to sound real harsh, but that's their job. We are the employers, they're the employees. So, if you ask for a format that is, that is a method that allows you to understand where you're spending your money, you have every right to expect that. And also, I would hope that the squished-down lines, if you'll recall in last year's budget, there were lines where you couldn't even read what it said on that line. You know, like for a salary for a person, and also, are we going to have the ability to either print out our own budget from the website or receive updated budgets before we go to the meeting? And I think, Tommy, you're one of the people that always got a budget that was out of date when you would go to a meeting. I mean, it was like, oh, they'd say, oh, we've already taken care of that, you know, we've done this, and you'd have this budget, they'd have that budget, and somebody else might have another budget. So, you didn't know, if you're on foot or horseback. You know, you were like wandering people, looking for a land to land on, it was crazy. So, hopefully, we can have up-to-date information for the meetings, so that we'll all know what we're talking about, and it will be the same budget.
We'll have to ask them about that, because it's a good point. We'll certainly, they'll certainly have it on the website, which you can print out, but that's 137 pages, that's going to be the very complex one. Hopefully, they'll put the executive summary also on the budget on their website, so that can be printed out. And then, as the changes are made, hopefully, they'll make them on those as well. But I think it's a very good point, we didn't ask about the updates, because we certainly have had problems with that before.
Oh, yes.
But I think they are trying with this new format, because they were the guinea pigs two years ago. This last year was the first year everyone had to do it, and now they're into their second year. And granted, they keep changing it, RIDE keeps changing it, because they're adapting it as they move. So, I think that Charahoe is doing the best they can to keep us updated with this, but we will ask them about the ongoing, because that has been a problem, we need an ongoing page number, an ongoing change.
Right, but this is an ongoing problem for the last 15 years. Usually, they, they tell you it's very difficult, so I'm very happy that you've been successful in attempting to have this done, because we have asked for information before and have been told that they're changing, or they've changed, or it's too difficult. And I had one year asked them, I said, I know, you could export it into Excel and simply link it to the kind of information that we want. And that seemed to kind of like, be a little bit out of reach.
I think with the, the RIDE format, which was so incredibly complex, because they wanted like a teacher broken down by 10% over here, 40% there.
Oh, I know, that's crazy.
Terribly difficult. Difficult for them as well, in all fairness, not, not just difficult for us. And so, what we're trying to do is have them so that they can say, these are the teachers, this is the cost, this is, you know, and then if there's a miscellaneous, this is the breakdown, this is why. I think they are certainly going to try to make it, especially with the footnotes, to explain why one number is different from another. It would help us a lot.
Okay, and thank you very much. Hopefully, it works out.
Thank you, Donnie. Good.
Nobody likes money.
Are we all set on this? Okay. Last public forum. Okay, I guess we're ready to go home. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's do adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.